Good evening. I call this November 22nd meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording of this meeting. On November 25th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.tanofmorrisville.org/governance/live-video. Councilmember Garamella intends to join the meeting a little bit later. Our sergeant in arms this evening is Senior Officer Rodriguez. We appreciate him being with us this evening. Thank you, sir. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Attorney Frank Gray. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. Garamis, please. Please bless the elected leader. To be grateful for Thanksgiving holiday. May he have a family.
Amen. All who are able, please stand and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policies to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does any council member have anything they'd like to share at this time? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
I make a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda.
Second?
A motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously 6-0. There are four items on this evening's consent agenda: a resolution authorizing the construction of the Church Street Park amenity expansion project, and the approval of three sets of October minutes. Would anyone like to pull any of these items for discussion before we adopt?
I would, member.
Yes.
I want to vote for the resolution authorizing the construction of the Church Street Park amenity expansion project.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and adopt the rest of the agenda, and then we'll have staff come and talk to us about that one, if that's okay with everybody. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item 6A.
Make that motion. Second?
I have a motion and second to adopt those three items. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously 6-0. At this time, we are at item 7, items pulled from the consent agenda. I'd like to recognize Mark Spagnoli, town engineer, to address any questions. Councilmember Robati.
Yes. Would you tell us a little bit more about their background and their involvement?
So, yes, Frank.
Councilmember Robati, maybe it'll help you with that. So, as we went through this agreement, or our work with American Cricket Enterprises, or ACE, have you heard them call? What they do in most cases is they don't make agreements under their sort of corporate name. They create subsidiaries for each of their ventures. And so that's what they did in this case, is they created the MLC Morrisville Stadium Company for the purposes of this agreement with us in Morrisville.
Okay. Just ask the management about liability in terms of the rest of the contract, or the...I guess I'm not entirely sure what the function and the scope of the new LLC is.
Frank may be able to help me, but essentially, they created this LLC for this agreement. So, our agreement technically is not with American Cricket Enterprises, it is with MLC Morrisville Stadium Company.
Okay. So, if, I guess my question is, if the Morrisville Stadium Company, we've entered into an agreement with Morrisville Stadium Company, if Morrisville Stadium Company defaults on the agreement, what is the responsibility in terms of ACE to fill that contract?
So, I do not believe that...
Maybe not, and I've been on not correctly understanding exactly what's going on, so maybe you could just explain.
Sure. Right, so they created this subsidiary, so if there were a default, it would be a default on the part of MLC Stadium Company and not on behalf of American Cricket Enterprises. But I will say, as we went through this, this was all vetted through Frank's office. Basin Hammerick, one of the attorneys there, worked throughout this process with us to make sure that it was, you know, a legal and valid process, and he had no concerns with the way the agreement was constructed using that LLC.
If I could just add, the corporate officers of MLC Stadium Company are the same as the ACE corporate officers. It's the same individuals, just for informational purposes.
Okay. I appreciate that. So, then what is the...I guess I don't understand the purpose of the Morrisville Stadium Company LLC, except to protect ACE from any liability that might result from a breach of the contract? That makes me a little nervous.
Frank? Well, I would say you're probably 100% correct.
Yeah, maybe a little nervous.
We can only look to the assets of the LLC. If we were to get into some kind of litigation where we were looking for damages, you know, that is the whole purpose of forming a separate company. So, we did investigate the financial position of the LLC, and we're satisfied at the time. So, there's no question it's a subsidiary of ACE, accounting bodies.
If I could add, from a liability perspective, our position, from a capital project perspective, is protected because we won't proceed, and we have not proceeded, with any of the work that create any liability for us without payment upfront. For example, this contract is the same. Once council, if you were to award this contract this evening, we will not execute the contract until we receive the remaining balance of the funds, which is a little over $1 million. We will not proceed with the construction work until that's received. So, from a capital, I can't speak to the operational component of the agreement, but from the capital perspective, we are protected financially.
That's the way that I care about being protected.
Yeah.
So, all right, so my understanding, based on what Mark just said, is that in the execution of the contract, we won't have any financial exposure, no matter what?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That's how we are agreement structured.
Does anyone have any other questions for staff on this item? Thank you for the clarification on that, that was important. I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution authorizing the construction of the Church Street Park amenity expansion project.
I'll make that motion, sure.
Okay. I have a motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2022-440, of the Morrisville Town Council, authorizing the construction of the Church Street Park amenity expansion project.
Would anyone like to second that?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Spagnoli.
Thank you.
I have one presentation this evening. Jeannie Hooks, Director of Management Services, and I apologize if I say this wrong, Cassie Langley, Controller, will now make the fund balance presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. It's my pleasure to actually present for you tonight our fund balance analysis. As you said, we have Ms. Cassie Langley as our Controller, and she's here with me tonight, pinch hitting for Nancy, our Finance Director, but she's also listening and capturing some questions and comments at the end. If you will hold your questions, let me roll through the presentation. Okay. Tonight, we're going to talk in summary about fund balance, and we're going to focus on what is the fund balance position, and we're going to focus on the policy and compliance, and also share with you some perhaps key observations we're seeing over time, and see what we can do to keep things going forward, and think about if we move forward to retreat in our big discussion. Sort of setting the table for the bigger conversation. The total fund balance includes all governmental funds. That essentially means to you, the general fund and all the sub-funds combined, that's your municipal service district, that's your healthcare premium fund, your debt service fund, your capital reserve funds, and all of your retirement funds are incorporated in this total governmental fund picture. The highlight on this slide is to observe that the total governmental fund balance actually has decreased. Essentially, where that comes from is in the year, we made some critical decisions, where we netted transfers out to capital projects of about $3.7 million, and combined with the net difference between revenues coming in over expenditures, it ultimately equated or calculated to a reduction in fund balance. And what that means is you sent money out to pay for capital projects, i.e. the ones that were active at the time were the Church Street Park expansion and future park property And then there were a few others that came up through the year. So, an unassigned fund balance is really your available funds that you have according to policy that's calculated as a percentage of actual expenditures at year-end. It's at 36%, or 36.34%, to be specific. Put some perspective on it, in accordance to the policy, the unassigned fund balance is 4.2 million above your minimum of your policy of 25%. And it's 3.3 million below the policy target of 45%, as measured to the actuals that occurred in that year. While I include a midpoint measure, just for comparative, there is no midpoint measure in the policy to benchmark to at this point, but it is something we've shared with you. We recognize, I think, an important factor here is that expenditures overall, the key takeaway here is that they have increased prior to, as compared to prior year. And we understand that as expenditures increase, because that's what it's measured to, the percentage of unassigned fund balance has a greater potential to potentially decrease, and the demand on cash flow actually could change. And that's what we're observing, so we'll talk about that a little bit more. So, unassigned fund balance, I wanted to break this down actually a little bit further. Reporting requirements, we are required to fold in, in this unassigned fund balance, your municipal service districts reserves or healthcare premium reserves. That's a requirement. To break it down, I just want to make sure that you understand MSD is really limited to that type of expense. I want to make sure you understand what that growing accumulated value is, that that's really meant for converting those private streets to public standards. And then we have this new element, which is your healthcare premium, and we're going to reappropriate those reserves at the end of the year. After audit, we'll reappropriate this, because they're meant to help you hold down escalating cost of healthcare premiums. So, that'll be reappropriated. That'll be about roughly 12.8 million, or almost 13 million, of unassigned fund balance So, let's talk about the policy just a little bit, and what it really says, very simply, is the unassigned fund balance shall be no less, should not be less than 25% of the reported expenditures. If in excess of 45%, then council has the authority that you may appropriate to one-time items, such as capital projects, to capital reserves, and/or to economic development purposes. And it stipulates that the designated target, therefore, of unassigned fund balance is 45% in the policy. The staff is actually working with our financial advisors on updating our debt modeling post-audit. And one of the things that they, we asked them to do is to benchmark our policies, i.e. unassigned fund balance policy, and we are working on that with them. And that's something we can bring forward in the future as an update to the debt model. And council, as you further take this information, this information will be really important as a stepping stone to your retreat discussions. So, why do we have unassigned fund balance, and why do we have a policy around it? It's really important that we have cash flow for operations during the year. And just a small reminder, that during the first and most of your second quarter, your revenues, your primary revenues, which is your tax, your ad valorem taxes, and your sales tax, they really don't start coming in and materialize until this, about the end of the second quarter, the first part of the third quarter. With that, you have expenses that actually start July 1, after you adopt a budget, that we need to cash flow. So, for the first and second quarter, that's really what fund balance is meant for, to help you do that. It also helps us mitigate those unforeseen circumstances, those things that we can't control that rise up in a year. So, natural disasters, for example, expenses where we have to shut something down, but we still have to carry some kind of operational load. Usually for... And then we also have it for helping us maximize when there are opportunities arise that we just, we need to pay attention to. So, based on our operational expenditure patterns, just for tidbit of information, the town actually routinely spends, on average, most, mostly during the first and second quarter. Now, think about that. When you get a new budget year, you get new funds authority, and we go out and we're trying to get those initiatives started, those, renew those contracts for services such as solid waste, utilities, landscaping, all of those things, they hit in the first quarter. So, we're starting activities with a new budget. It tends to be in the first quarter. We tend to see that cost escalate in the second quarter, hence the reason why it's important to pay attention to what you're sending out in that quarter, and make sure you have cash flow to pay for that, as revenues start coming in, in that last part of the second quarter, first part of the third quarter. Cash flow is actually a material facet when credit rating agencies actually look at us. We need to pay attention that we are able to handle and create some continuity of operations through natural disasters, through anything that's an emergency. They're expecting us to demonstrate that we're prepared, and that's what we're finding. So, this slide, it puts into context the various points of measure. Just to give you some understanding, on an average operational dollars, this is our historical data at work here, at the minimum requirement by LGC of 8%, that represents one month, that's about 3.3 million that we need for capital. At no less than 25%, according to the policy, the equivalent of three months, you need about 10 million. Again, based on our historic data over the past five years, that's what it says, on average, we would need operationally. Then at the target of 45%, or six months, the equivalent tends to be around 20 million. At this point, our total fund balance falls just above 25 million, 25% of 13 million. So, this slide is actually an important slide to look at and dissect just a little bit. So, what this is, is your past 10 years, I sliced it down fiscal year 2017, and I looked at the prior five years and compared it to the last five years, the most recent five years. And there have been some significant influences over the past, or the last five years, that we probably should pay attention to, that are important to the performance of unassigned fund balance and the calculation. So, what's happened in the five-year period prior to 2017, after 2017, we have since added three capital reserve funds, two with the equivalent of one cent on the tax rate being sent to each. We've had an increase in our fire apparatus funding that's actually above one cent tax rate. That is more than three cents that's actually going out of the general fund, operations, that's being committed to future capital projects. That's a good thing, a great thing for CIP and getting things started, but we often have to put into perspective it's not being used for operations. The three cent increase in the tax rate that came this year, this fiscal year, it's actually being directed specifically to the debt service fund for that bond debt as we issue it. It's not being used for operations. The past two years, according to the debt model that we worked with Davenport, we have actually needed to use some general fund monies to start funding up that debt reserve before the tax rate hit, according to our debt model plan. So, we've been putting some general fund monies aside the past two years. So, if we look at expenditures, they've significantly increased, most recently over the past five-year period, of about an annual average of 9%. Where is that coming from? It's actually coming from us increasing the number of personnel in that five-year period to support our services, market adjustments for recruitment and retaining skilled employees here for workforce development, growing demands from expanding community, meeting that as our population expands, the demand expands, and our programs and services need to expand. Added new programs, like Smart Shuttle, sustainability, and Smart City, and all of those have a price that we need to have annually to sustain them. At year-end, the budget to actual performance has also increased. That means we're putting more budget in play by year-end, using the dollars that you give us to deliver services to the community and to have, and get initiatives at least started. The revenues on average, conversely comparing that, have actually remained similar in the growth trend. If you compared the first group of five years to the last, most recent five years, they've actually grown at a rate of about 6%. It stayed the same over the two five-year intervals. The next two slides work in tandem. The pie chart really illustrates the portion of budget that was considered unspent. Now, when you give us a budget, you're giving us really what is a limit for us to work within authority to use and leverage those dollars for services. It is not that we are going to spend it at 100%, but we are allowed to work within that number to materialize the things that we say we need to deliver to the community in services and projects. So, there are some things that just don't fit in a fiscal year, and we have to carry them over, and that's called PO rollovers. So, that 9% I'm dissecting in the bigger pie chart of the categories of things that that percentage that was unspent makes up. PO rollovers, lapsed salary, we have vacancies, we have turnover, and then we just have general savings, where we estimated things like IT projects to actually cost us this, but we actually got a better, a better outcome. We got savings as a result, when you compare it to budget. This side really visualizes how our performance, budget to actual, has actually been changing over the past five years. We're doing much better at putting the budget in play and getting it to work for the community. And I believe it demonstrates how Morrisville has a strong aim towards getting things done. And being creative when we do so is also very important. The next few slides are just informational. We always want to share with you the other fund balance reserves. These are things that will be, and are important factors when we are prioritizing CIP projects, leveraging other resources to get things shovel-ready, taking care of big, large apparatus such as fire trucks, and planning for paying for those. And a few others here noting again that we are actually projecting use of these reserves in our five-year adopted CIP, some level across those five years. These reserves are in play to get projects done. So, in looking ahead at the big picture, we would ask council to really stay focused on what are the emerging big picture needs. Staff actually does not recommend appropriating fund balance at this time, because fund balance, unassigned fund balance, is technically below your target that's identified in your policy. More so, we actually are looking at continued construction inflationary needs. We know that the economy is actually primed for potential contraction. It's just a matter of when, how, what, things that we need to be looking for. We recognize that recent decisions have actually shifted just how much we need in cash flow when it comes to our operational expenses. When we increased our budget, we increased our authority to spend to deliver growing demands in community services. There are significant priority projects, this is a key one, that are currently in development, and we need to retain this flexibility, to be clear that they are the priorities that we need to realize. Also, at retreat, we'll be talking about future interest and planning for future CIP projects, and effectively moving beyond not just what's in development, but what we see on the future horizon, and how we can achieve that. Don't have endless resources, but what we need to do is just have good planning, commitment, and have critical strategy approaches. And unassigned fund balance is one of those tools. We just have to be mindful how we apply it or preserve it for when we need it in the We need to also be vigilant on the impacts or our financial position to future bond issuances and the changing credit rating methodologies that we are... Fund balance is one of those that we need to watch. So, that concludes my summary of fund balance highlights and the information that we hope is going to be useful for retreat. And I'm going to pause here to see if the town manager, if you have any additional comments.
No, thank you. I do not.
Someone to open the floor? But we need to address, or any informational needs that you have for the future.
This has been really helpful. Mayor Pretend Johnson, followed by Councilmember Scruggins Johnson, then Robati.
So, thank you, Jeannie. You're right, this is going to be really helpful going into this budget season and into retreat in January.
January, 27th, 28th, and 29th.
I have it on my calendar, but I...So, anyhow, so, yeah, so this is going to be incredibly helpful, and I understand the need for cash flow. And of course, I remember the year when the governor took our money away mid-budget year, and we had to kind of regroup quickly, so...
Actually lowered our budget.
That's, you are correct, that's right. But, so there are those situations that arise, so that's really, unassigned fund balance is critical to the operation. I totally understand that. But when we talk about cash flow, knowing the projects that we have in the works today, and the ones that we are looking in the near future, is what we have in unassigned fund balance today enough to help us with our cash flow issues over the next couple of months and years?
So, cash flow, or unassigned fund balance, is one of those key factors when we have large projects that are grant-funded, where they're, where we actually have to expend first, and we get reimbursed. An example of that is Morrisville Carpenter Road project. So, cash flow was actually very important. I would say yes, if we stick to our policy. Policy was prepared for the purpose of being sustainable, of being able to address, not only, I spoke a lot about operational cash flow, but also... I spoke a lot about operational cash flow, but also talking about expending for capital, for capital items that are grant-related that we tend to qualify for in many cases, i.e. Morrisville Carpenter was one of those projects that was important for us to have that cash flow. So yes, I would agree that as long as we are working within our policy, and we benchmark our policy and retest that, and it still is valid to the size Morrisville is, it's important that we live within the boundaries we set, and we should be sustainable and successful. That's what the planning, the strategic thoughtful process of realizing where it is now and what's on the horizon we need to pay attention to, and being mindful of that and the decisions that we have. The policy is yours, but we set that policy for a reason, to be sustainable.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to verify that, thank you.
Councilmember Scruggins Johnson, please.
Thank you. This is the first time I've used the microphone, so I don't know how well I'm coming through. But this is a really important topic, the unassigned fund balance, and usually around this time, we're faced with a dilemma of what we can spend some discretionary monies with. So in my recollection, I haven't served when we actually had to pause on this, you know, on this topic. Do we anticipate that in the next year, we would have a similar situation? Because I was, you know, we're kind of, if we pause this year and we don't spend any unassigned fund balance on projects for 2023, 2024, do you anticipate this to be wait-and-see? There's big projects coming up, and cash flow is an issue, especially the AV Airport Boulevard extension with the prepayment of cash for six months. I mean, that really is hard on the town, and that does hit this potential area. So we're going to be in this kind of wait-and-see for a while.
So it's hard to predict the future, I will say that first and foremost, but what I think we know is ahead of us is the decisions you have to make on the things that you've already committed to. The one that comes first and foremost to mind is Town Center. We do not have a bond category for Town Center, technically, and we would need to, in accordance to the debt model, the previous debt model, we would have to actually add installment financing or use some other reserve component, or more than likely, it's a hybrid solution in the future. What I think I would impress upon council is that you have a lot of things that you want to do that are already in the hopper, and being clear on what your priorities are at your retreat discussion is going to be important. And pausing until you have that discussion, and then clearly knowing what resources you have in your reserves, in your debt capacity, and what you have to tap into as you reaffirm what your priorities are or and/or change them, that's what I think is important takeaway of tonight. That's a conversation that needs to happen, and then we can align. What resources do we have? Where do we see ourselves in the future? What is the economy doing that might be impactful to the next year's calculation of fund balance?
Right, I think if we make no decisions, we'll still see an increase in costs at every level, and it's almost, it's just a wait-and-see game. But I was just wanting to hear what we have programmed that you're thinking that we should reflect on, and I think Town Center is exactly what I needed to hear. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
If I heard you correctly, Jeanne, we're, fund balance percentage-wise, fund balance reserve-wise, we're at a midpoint between the minimum fund balance and the target unassigned fund balance. At what point, at what point would we be in a situation where take into account that the lowering percentage of unassigned fund balance and maybe, and we would maybe take a hit on our credit rating? But I know that our credit rating is what determines the percentage that at which we can buy money, we can borrow money, and, I mean, that drives a lot of financing decisions. So do you think that we're in any danger there?
So interesting question. So we've had conversations already with our financial advisors, and they've identified that Moody's is changing their credit rating methodology, and when one does that, you know, others will follow. So what we need to pay attention to is one of the most critical factors that they evaluate as credit rating agencies, they all rate it slightly different in a sense, but the critical factor is your reserves. And if they recognize a material drawdown on your reserves, that's impactful to how you score. And Morrisville is, in some of the scoring, right on the border of what is double A versus a triple A in some of the factors. And some of the qualifying factors, the things that make Morrisville great, you know, we're in, right in the middle of the economic engine in the triangle, that's great, but even those factors, they give us a bump up, actually are changing as well. And that's more information that the town manager and myself and the finance director, we're trying to unpack and understand, and more information to bring forward to you so you have a clearer understanding. We'll need to do another issuance within the next year that will be very important of how our position looks, and that's another reason why I say, take a pause. We know this is coming up. We know what factors, critical factors are at play here, and how this is very important to that, that picture.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Councilmember Ral was ahead of me.
Thank you, I didn't see his thing, but now I do. Councilmember Ral, please.
Thank you. I guess, really an observation of something I think we have to start talking about, maybe, as we go through the year, is just looking at our rising expenses, to what extent can we project, you know, looking at our revenue sources, you know, whether it's the tax rate and the pressures we have on operational costs, and also future development. I mean, we know we're growing closer to build-out, but we've recently had a lot of economic development announcements, the Sparks Life Sciences Campus, all the McCrimmon area, you know, what is the dollar value of that tax impact to Morrisville? So as we, as a town and a council, are looking at, you know, development and how we grow, how can we offset these expenses with future revenue, you know? And so I'm not asking for an answer, I just think that that's one thing I'd like to see, just one useful part of the presentation was, you know, very useful for me, was looking at what we have in the coffer with the PIL funds, the transportation funds, you know, where as we've saved our money and put them in these buckets, we can actually invest for, you know, we just, last council meeting had a discussion about that. But, I mean, that would be a nice figure to, you know, come up, even if it's an estimate, right, on development, multifamily developments we've approved, other developments we've approved, you know, where does that factor into our five-year plan, 10-year plan of, you know, future revenue in the pipeline?
Excellent observation with the economic development that is going on, and maybe how it's going to change in the future is going to be critical for Morrisville to understand how it's going to impact that future sustainability of your largest revenue engine, which is tax-based, which is ad valorem that's calculated on that. So yes, sir, all things above are very important for us to assess and have been important for us to assess, and will continue.
As a follow-up, do we have any projections of when we're going to be at build-out?
We can bring that information forward. We probably need to circle up with planning and budget folks to really get a better understanding of how population, the recent changes have maybe impacted or changed that picture.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Member Fender.
Yeah, so you talked about the changing credit rating methodology. Do you know yet how it is changing?
We have some reports that we're studying right now, and I actually have questions that I'm formulating to get back with our financial advisors so that we are clear on what that means to us, and what can we do and what can we really influence as we head into a future bond issuance to get the best outcome possible for Morrisville. So we're strategically thinking through those things right now and having those conversations, and more information to bring forward.
Okay, yeah.
Prepare and prepare council.
Yeah, it would be interesting to know how that is changing. And then I got two questions just about these graphs, the one on slide nine. Just trying to get my head wrapped around what this is telling me, can you?
Certainly. So year over year, the blue bars represent the amount of expenditures that were recorded, actual expenditures. Because unassigned fund balance, the value of unassigned fund balance is measured to that calculation in that year, the green bar is depicting the percentage change, or the percentage that that represents year over year. So you can see how at some point, it was quite high in 2016, and then it's dropped down to be in really what is a midpoint of about 34%, 36% in the last five-year period.
So what happened in 2016 that the percentage was so high? I would imagine that's, you don't want that necessarily.
Right. More than likely, it's potentially an underspent year where you had revenues in greater excess to your expenses that added to the calculation, and the value of your fund balance was probably about 11 million, and as compared to that smaller expenditure amount, it actually represented a larger percentage of that total expenditure in that year. I don't know specifics, I can't dial that back off the top of my head, but I can certainly verify that that's what.
I can. From 2016 to 2017, we were in the well into the mid-50s as a percentage of fund balance, and that was the year that council transferred $5 million to various capital reserve funds.
That's right.
And put it into reserve funds to share. So it was an intentional shift of excess to save for those future projects.
Okay.
Thank you, that's right.
All right, thank you. And then the other graph on slide 11, it's general fund budget, general fund budget to actual, so actual what?
As a percentage of your budget, you spent that much. So your actuals, you spent in this year 90% of your total budget towards expenses, booked to recorded expenses, that's what that says. And unspent, 9.9%. That's why this chart tells you what the reason is for that portion that remained unspent, really what occurred. You had vacant positions, you actually had purchase orders that were in progress, you can actually consider those actually spent. They can't be booked in that fiscal year, they get picked up and actually moved over to '23, and we actually have done a better job with P O rollovers, and what that means is we've gotten things done as compared to prior year. That number was 2.5 million. It's just over a million this year. So we are getting more done and rolling over less. And then you have just natural savings that occur from, you have to have certain contingency components, there are things like IT items that you budgeted this, but actually IT items are much more competitive in this market right now, and we're getting cost savings as a result. We've had less maintenance needs, and that creates savings.
So what was the environment in 2021 that the percentage spent ended up being only 83%? What were those factors?
Got it? Sorry, you're back on?
Yeah, I was looking at slide, yeah, no, 11.
Okay, ask me your question again, please.
Yeah, so in fiscal year 2021, it shows we were 83% that we spent of our budget. What were the factors?
So we reported to you then, and I don't think I brought my report here, but we reported to you a much larger purchase order rollover percentage. That was at over 2.5 million, that's part of it. The other part of it was that we did have turnover and vacancies, and I think that was about 700,000, and then we had about 3% of the budget that was really savings or inflationary related factors that rolled out at that time. And then again, you had a different amount of budget to work with that was lower than as compared to '23.
All right, all right, good, thank you.
Thank you, good questions.
Okay, I have just more a comment than, well, two comments, really. I think our staff has demonstrated some great discipline and ability to stay within the rules and guidance that we get, all our accredited departments, et cetera. I'm sure that our finance department will understand the rules of the credit rating agencies and make sure that we bring forth the ability for us to enact policies that will keep us where we need to be, and then we'll have to make the financial decisions to stay within those because they want the policies to be in place that makes sense to them and that we adhere to them. So right now, we've been really good about adhering to all our policies, so now we have to just sort of carry that forward. So that's more of an observation. Also want to say that staff, I'm very confident that y'all will be able to project out the cash flow as we move forward. I mean, all this is a snapshot as of July 1st, but you guys have a really good ability to understand what we have in the hopper and how we'll be allocating that and investing that each month. So I'm sure that you will keep us from dipping too low as we go along and bring us the information we need to make sure that we have the ability to be agile and make the decisions to make the investments that we need to later as the year goes on, because we all know that the best place, best time to buy land was 10 years ago, the second best is now, the best time to complete a project is now before the costs go up. So I understand the need now to kind of pause for a little while and not make some actual aggressive investments of our taxpayer dollars, but we don't also want to wait too long because the items that we are doing are important and we've prioritized them, but as you mentioned, the list is long, and the CIP, I think, recently had 29 million of unmet needs in out-years. So if we are going to meet the need, desired wants and needs of our community, we're going to have to find a way to get there. And pausing is important now, but we want to put ourselves in a position that next year, we're talking about investing in the future rather than pausing again, is my hope. So those were comments more than questions, but I appreciate you giving me a moment to share those. We've all had a chance to speak on this and ask questions. Does anyone have any other comments or questions for Jeanne at this time? Mayor Pretend Johnson.
So Jeanne, when are you going to know more about what Moody's is doing as far as reserves? Do you have any timeframe?
I should be able to bring information to you at retreat. We'll have it thoroughly with everything else that's going on that we need to work into our schedule with CIP rolling those projects for us, getting those prepared, and talking, using that information, actually talk with our financial advisors. We'll be able to get that and bring it for retreat.
Okay, and just to clarify, when we talk about pausing, I mean, we're talking about pausing on the spending down of the general fund. We're not talking about pausing projects in town. I don't want to confuse the public. There are lots of projects that are currently in the works and are still moving forward, so those are not pausing. We're talking here from a financial, kind of, our reserve standpoint and how it affects our financial position. We're not talking about the projects that we have, I just want to make sure that there's no confusion.
We have an adopted CIP that has funding alignment, and your reserves, the reason why I said that they're projected as a part of your adopted CIP is because we have them in play to get those projects done. play to get those projects done. That's the, the playbook you've given staff to work with. That's the priorities you've given staff that are meaningful, that we need these reserves at play and to be flexible to work with. It's when it's changing and when we have things that are still in development, i.e. town center, that you might want to pivot or we need to adjust and realign, but we need your direction on that. And that's the critical conversation to have at retreat is are the priorities, have they changed? And what do we need to do to realign resources? Priorities and your ability to have reserves and to raise revenue when necessary.
Because we got, just got one chance a year to do that.
One chance a year for the raising of revenue, yes.
Yep. So we're glad that we're going to have a retreat. We'll have lots of good meaty discussions there. So this is great to set the table for that.
Thank you all very much.
You very much. We're now moving to item nine, public address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received. Acknowledge anyone in the room who signed up?
There were no comments received via email and there were no individuals signed up to give in-person public comments.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the room who'd like to speak for up to three minutes on any subject of your choosing? Seeing none, we'll move on to action 10. Item 10, action items. There are two action items on this evening's agenda. Annexation of properties located along Watkins Road and fall advisory committee appointments. May Golden, Planner One, will facilitate the first item.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Council. Before I hand off the next item to Ms. Golden, I just want to do a quick introduction. This is her first presentation. May Golden came to us a few months ago. She is our newest Planner One. She's a graduate of UNC Chapel Hill. And for about a year before she joined us, she was working through the UNC Fellowship Program with the town of Statesville. So we're really excited to have her and she's doing a great job.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Everyone, good evening. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yeah.
Tonight I'll be presenting for the annexation position for the property along Watkins Road. So as we can see here, there are five separate parcels illustrated in red, one of which is, sorry, split by Watkins Road. It's related to the discovery at Watkins Road project. And because of the size of this project, town staff expects that, an application to recombine those subjected properties. In total, the property acreage is 17.51 acres and is within our ETJ, as we can see here in this image. Staff recommends approval of this annexation for the following reasons. One, the town has historically honored voluntary annexation requests. Secondly, the petition meets all statutory requirements. Annexation of the property would expand the town's tax base. And the annexation increase in tax base would improve the economies of scale and the delivery of town services. At the December 13th meeting, the council will be asked to consider the proposal of the annexation and should accept or deny the petition. But tonight council is act to ask, sorry, has asked to act on resolution A and B for the annexation petition. What are your questions, if any? Also, there, the applicant is here tonight if he have any additional questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, we should do this in two separate resolutions. I entertain a motion on resolution 2022-407-0A. I think we need to read it out and completely, please.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2022-407-0A of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the sufficiency of the petition to extend the town of Morrisville's properties located along Watkins Road between Aspiration Way and Perimeter Park Drive and commonly known as Zero Watkins Road, ANX dot 22 dot 00.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 6-0. I entertain a motion on the following resolution. Okay, please do.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2022-407-0B of the Morrisville Town Council, setting a date of December 13th for a public hearing on the question of voluntary annexation for properties located along Watkins Road between Aspiration Way and Perimeter Park Drive and commonly known as Zero Watkins Road, ANX dot 22 dash 0011.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also carries unanimously 6-0. Thank you very much. So we'll be seeing you again on the 13th.
Looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank the applicant for being here tonight. Appreciate that. Eric Smith, our town clerk, will facilitate the next item. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As council is aware, fall advisory, advisory committee recruitment ran from October the 14th through November the 14th at 5:00 PM. Town council did receive an administrative report regarding the fall advisory, advisory committee recruitment on November the 9th. And on the evening of November the 16th, town council received their ballots for appointments via email. And they did return those ballots to the office of the town clerk by November the 21st. I am happy to say that with the exception of one PMAC vacancy, council was able to successfully fill all the vacancies and upcoming aspiring terms. Now, to the Smart City Steering Committee, Anna Rupa Anthony. Planning and zoning board, Sanjay Akaria, Tim Totary, and Rick Bain. To the Performance Measures Advisory Committee, Hassan Mehdi, Muli Somayalazouza, Lauren Quick Graham, and Elizabeth Butros. To the Public Education Advisory Committee, Sachin Sobali, Renee Providence, Brianna Overmell, and Kristen Mooney. And to the Senior Advisory Committee, we have Patricia Sedzidlow. And if council doesn't have any questions, I just ask that we move on the resolution for the appointment. And these, they will get their notifications tomorrow so they can go ahead and get a quick start.
Okay. Let's recognize Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Scott.
What, what is the policy or procedure of writing in a candidate for, there was one candidate that, that did, that applied for Smart Cities Committee and didn't know whether there was a chance, if we can't do it tonight, is there a way we can write him in or get him to be on the Performance Measures Committee?
The, the only policy that's currently in place is that he could apply now and then his application would remain in our, in our pile for consideration during the next appointment cycle. Next appointment cycle, we should have one coming up around January, February to fill some upcoming aspiring terms, but that's the only current policy in place to get a member onto.
Do you know, well, I'm just curious, do you know in the next cycle, will there be openings on the Smart City Committee?
I do believe, give me, give me one moment to check.
And while Eric's doing that, I'll add, council did incorporate into a consideration, sort of a rolling, that you could consider them anytime. And that was to allow for committees that had lots of vacancies not to sit that way, that we could employ a targeted recruiting at any time.
Thank you for that, Tom, Senator Petya. If, if council did say, hey, we needed to fill these vacancies, we could always do the recruitment. But there's no policy outside of the recruitment cycle to fill it. But Smart Cities does have, does have four upcoming aspiring vacancies at the end of January.
Okay. And I didn't want to, any, any, about performance measures, is there any there?
I could say performance measure. Performance measures, I do not think performance measures has any upcoming. You know, their next vacancies aren't going to come around until August the 23rd, but they do have one remaining vacancy even after this appointment.
Okay.
But the only way that vacancy could be filled is through, if council did some type of targeted recruitment where they wanted to do an appointment cycle or at the next time.
So four openings for Smart Cities in January. Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I see a unique opportunity from the results of this balloting. And we used to do live ballots until we went to an offline system for efficiency reasons. And for the planning and zoning board, we have appointed an alternate that is a current sitting advisory committee member, Rick Bain. Rick Bain is currently on the senior advisory committee. And with this motion, he would be vacated from that committee because you can only serve on one committee at a time. Thereby, we would have two openings on the senior advisory committee. And we had a valid ballot presented to us with four names. And I would like to know if the council would be willing to add a second appointment for the senior advisory committee from those remaining individuals. So that we would have that committee because it's a unique situation with one person moving out. So that we would need a ballot of the three names that were remaining so that we could appoint one of those three.
Would you be comfortable doing that in advance of our December 13th meeting and approve that appointment then?
I think it's most efficient to do it today because the notification for all the committee members is tomorrow. And that allows them to attend the meetings in the right cycle. So I, I mean, there's only three names and I'm sure we could come up with majority if we had a ballot. Is there any questions or concerns?
I thought the committee positions to be filled. I'm fine with it.
So I guess, so what we're asking is to add to this list in front of us, add one more name to the senior advisory committee.
But we would need to do a ballot to do that.
Or we could discuss.
Or we could do it by acclamation. Yeah, there's that.
I'm fine with that if others are okay.
I'm fine with it. I'd just like to remind everyone that our committee meetings are open to everyone and they encourage participation.
Right. But the cycle, it, I just think it's most efficient, fill the slots if we have people that want to serve and, and we can go to the next cycle. Because I, I just think it gets lost and we have an opportunity to fill that slot tonight due to the circumstances with which is very unique. It's not, I know we've been in person with ballots and we've had an issue with appointing an alternate, a regular, and then we had to do another ballot to appoint an alternate. We have done that in council before, so I'm not asking for something that's completely unusual. It's just we haven't done that in a while.
We do have a break coming up at 7:20. So if we want to go ahead and approve this.
I would not like to approve this at this time. I would like to have a ballot, add a name, and then modify the resolution or vote. I vote this down at this time. I would like to see if the council would entertain a ballot prior to approving this resolution.
Good. Councilmember Robati, you had a question?
I, I'm not sure what the mechanism would be, whether you're talking about just reading each of the three names and we, which I'm also fine with. I don't, like, I don't care. Are you suggesting that we, Eric, reissue the ballots and we vote on those again?
If it helps, I already have the ballots for senior advisory printed without the, without Rick Bain's name on it. If they did, if council did want to proceed with the, with the secondary balloting process, I already have them printed, ready to go. It would just, just the logistics of facilitating will be, will be up to council.
Why can't he, I'm just curious, why can't he serve on two committees? I'm confused about what we're trying to do here.
That's our rule.
Oh, it's a rule.
It's a policy.
Oh, they can't.
Okay. One committee at a time.
I forgot that, so, okay. Yeah, might as well do it now then.
Does anyone have any issue with doing it right now? A hearing none? Would you be willing to just pass those out? So there'll be three people on the ballot? Well, he'll explain it, but vote for one. Because we just appointed one out of the four.
Well, we already voted Patricia in, so she's off the ballot and Rick's off the ballot. There's only two names left.
Well, Rick wasn't on the ballot. Wasn't on the ballot.
That's right.
Yeah, there was just three on the ballot. Now there'll be, there were four and now there will be three.
While we're waiting, just, just to, just to want to bring up a thought, we, you know, when people are applying, I just, so like, if they've already applied and they didn't get a committee, I would just ask that if they have an interest in the area that we could reconsider them for the, the next appointment cycle. Because I think that that, there were a couple of other qualified candidates for Smart Cities. And I'm a little bit disappointed that that one, you know, citizen resident, you know, isn't going to be able to serve now. And so I just didn't know whether you all could factor that in.
Didn't he turn it in late?
No, no, he, he's.
So if I could do some clarification, please?
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate this.
So on an application, candidates select their first preference for committee and a second preference for committee. And Eric provides you that information. If I've understood Councilmember Ralph correctly, this person did not indicate a different preference.
Okay.
So where council has been challenged before is appointing people to committees that they have not selected and then they.
Sign their name to it?
Aren't engaged or anything. So if they're interested in a different committee.
Okay.
Now, if they want to be on the Smart Cities, it sounds like that opportunity would come up in January and an application is already on file.
Okay, so yeah, they would.
If he wants to consider a different committee, he should apply for that committee.
For anyone listening tonight, for anyone listening tonight to the meeting, just please, one thing I think is important is if you really want to be on a committee, for me personally, it's really important to email your interest of why or how badly you want. So I would encourage anyone listening tonight, if you want to apply for a committee in January, please email the, the council so we can know your interests. Because to me personally, it's a lot more than just getting an application and I'm reading an application. So that's going to make a difference for me moving forward because we're getting a lot of applicants for these positions. So just wanted to make that point to the public.
You have all six?
I'm waiting on one.
Councilmember Graham, I'll not be able to vote on this.
That is unfortunate, given the circumstances right now. The person will only be appointed if they receive four.
Is there any way we can wait till he gets here to do this when he gets here?
But it won't make any difference, Steve. That's the thing. If the person doesn't get four, if there's a tie, then we'll have to wait for him. But if he doesn't, if there isn't a tie, if someone got four votes, it won't make any
If there is a tie and drives at 7:30, then.
I'm sorry. Don't know why we didn't wait until he was here to vote the vote.
Five votes were received for Asmus. Wow, that is speedy quick.
That was speedy quick.
Hold on, sir.
I actually was not expecting that.
I had one prepared for every possible incident.
Well, I was not expecting the vote either, quite frankly.
Eric, that was magical. Thank you.
We appreciate our staff. We appreciate our staff.
That'd be interesting.
So I appreciate the agility and the flexibility of the council in order to make that happen, to get a more full and robust committee moving forward. So thank you, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. Any other thoughts before we take the vote?
Thank you. I appreciate the council's willingness to be flexible, and I think the Senior Advisory Committee is probably going to be very thankful as well.
Okay. I thought I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I'd like to make the motion. And, Eric, I can't see the number. There we go. Thank you for making it large. I appreciate that. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-457-zero of the Morrisville Town Council considering appointments of Advisory Committee members. Second?
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries 6-0. Thank you very much. And so, these appointed residents will receive information when? I mean.
And then the support staff liaison will be forwarding future meetings in any, I would hope, before the Thanksgiving holiday. Try to get it done all tomorrow.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate all the hard work that goes on behind the scenes to make this go really smoothly. And so the timing is January, it sounds like? We're going to do another recruitment cycle to meet those needs? Okay. Second meeting in January. Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we'll move on to the next item, item 11. That's future meeting events and citizen involvement opportunities. So we had a pre-Thanksgiving farmer's market this afternoon, and it was a beautiful day for it. Because of that, there will be no farmer's market this upcoming Saturday. But join us the following Saturday, December 3, as the Western Wake Farmer's Market offers healthy and fresh food and goods from small local businesses. At that time, we will, we will begin operating under our winter hours, which are 9:30 a.m. till 12 noon every Saturday. Visit http://wwwfm.ag to see a complete list of local vendors and shop local. Morrisville youth are invited to enter our stormwater photo contest. We're calling all amateur high school age photographers. Help us achieve our goal of increasing public education regarding stormwater, showcase your talents, and win a gift card by entering the 2022 Town of Morrisville Stormwater Photo Contest. This year's theme is "We Are All Downstream." The deadline for entries is Wednesday, November 30. See our website or social media channels for information and an entry form. Wake County Public Health is sponsoring a free COVID-19 vaccination clinic on November 30 at the Western Wake Health and Human Services Center, 111 Jane Shaxon Avenue, in Cary from 11 a.m. till 5 p.m. No appointment is required. Vaccines are available to adults and children, free of charge. No identification or insurance is needed. Residents are also invited to complete survey on Morrisville parks before November 30. The Town of Morrisville Community Enhancement Team wants your input on which parks and amenities are the most important to you. Your feedback may be used to influence maintenance practices at various parks and greenways across Morrisville this winter. We appreciate any time you can provide in answering the survey, which can be found on our social media. The survey will close on November 30. On Friday, December 2, join us at Indian Creek Trailhead on Town Hall Drive as we kick off the holiday season with our Town of Morrisville Tree Lighting Event at 6 p.m. Santa Claus and the Town Council will be counting down the lighting of the tree, followed by some fun and entertainment. Trader Joe's will be there with seasonal beverages to share. Limited parking will be available in the Town Hall parking lot, and a shuttle will be running from Cedar Fort Community Center, and the shuttle service is encouraged. A few weeks later, on Thursday, December 22, starting at 5:30 p.m., we are looking forward to our first menorah lighting here in Morrisville. That will also be at the Indian Creek Trailhead. Mark your calendar for Thursday, December 8, which will be our Winter White Goods Collection Day. And just for information for later in this week, the Town of Morrisville Administrative Offices, Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center, Cedar Fort Community Center, and Morrisville Senior Center will be closed Thursday, November 24, and Friday, November 25 for Thanksgiving. Cedar Fort Community Center will also be closed on Saturday, November 26. Police, fire, and rescue services will remain available, as always, for life-threatening or in-progress emergencies. Call 911. For a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. At this time, we're at Council and Manager Comments, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender to get us started.
First, just shout out to Officer Long with Morrisville Police Department. I had the awesome opportunity to be able to do a ride-along with her. It was, I'd never done anything like that before, so it was, it was a very interesting evening doing a ride-along with her. I learned a lot, and it was also very enlightening. And I've already asked the chief if I can do it again soon, because I do think it was a valuable experience. Thank you to the police department and Officer Long.
Excellent. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson, please.
A couple of comments. First of all, I went, looking forward to doing a ride-along. I wasn't able to make it happen, but it is a lot of fun. I want to thank all those who attended Veterans Day, grateful for our veteran staff members who continue their service to the Town of Morrisville, enjoyed attending the senior holiday lunch, and the senior center, and the Turkey Bowl was a real blast, so thanks for doing that. Couple of other announcements. Last week, I attended the, the mayor was there, the First in Flight Awards, High Fly Awards for, ended up, ended the Entrepreneurship Week for North Carolina. And, you know, it's amazing, I think Morrisville could even do more, to do more things, to recruit more startups to come here. So I know we have the launch Morrisville, but I think it's something we need to talk about when we go into retreat, about just our economic development and how we're supporting small businesses and startups. And just a reminder for small businesses, if you're listening, tomorrow is the day to get your survey in for our small business surveys. So don't forget, I think you have until evening tomorrow. Final two things, just one, I was at the county commissioner meeting last night for, last afternoon, for Commissioner Hutchinson's last meeting. Just once again, want to thank him for his service to the, to the county, and for always being there for Morrisville, whether it's our greenways, or parks, or schools, cricket, a true leader and public servant who collaborated and communicated so very well. And, and finally, today was the day John F. Kennedy was assassinated in 1963, and one of his famous quotes in his first, his only inaugural address was, "Ask not what your country can do for you, what you can do for your country." And I just want to end my comments today thanking Seawat DeWali for their efforts of collecting over 5,000 pounds of food, which was really great. We celebrated that this weekend. And for the Morrisville Indians Association for preparing food for our staff and for our first responders. And I just think that it's just a great thing to see that in action with so many organizations doing things to help others through selfless service. And just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and pray for any family who's lost a loved one, and thinking very special thoughts for the family of Haley Brooks because of the tragedy that happened at the Christmas parade. But that's all I have for this evening. Have a wonderful week off.
Mayor Pretam Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So I too got to do a ride-along with our police department, and I want to thank Officer Sean Peace for sharing part of his shift with me, for sharing his knowledge with me, and for answering all my questions. So I too want to thank him for that. Also, you just heard about Trader Joe's of Morrisville and how they're involved in a lot of our activities. They also help donate to the Veterans Walk on November 12, so I really want to make sure that we thank them for their participation in our town events, in our Veterans Memorial Walk. They're a fabulous organization and very, a fabulous community partner. We talked so much about COVID vaccines. Don't forget to get your flu shot. I want to say the flu, the flu is going around, so please be careful out there. And then last, just want to say happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Nothing other than happy Thanksgiving to all.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by myself.
All the good stuff has been said. Thank you so much. I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe weekend. If you're traveling, please be cautious. Everybody wants to get to their destination safely, so I look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
I just want to share that it's my opinion that our community is the best. Over 5,000 pounds of food were collected to help those in need by our region, by local cultural and faith organizations, under the Seawat DeWali International Effort. I'm always proud of our community members and their ongoing selfless service to others. Speaking of which, our staff was celebrated and thanked by the Morrisville Indians Group, as was mentioned by Councilmember Ralph, particularly the Kits Creek area. For the third year in a row, lunch was provided, and it was a nice opportunity for our residents to thank our staff, who are truly the ones who each and every day are helping make Morrisville the very best place to live, work, learn, and play in the United States. We cannot say thank you enough to our staff. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I hope everyone has a wonderful time with friends and family this holiday season. Councilmember Robati.
I want to remind everyone that Saturday is Small Business Saturday. I'm very excited about that and looking forward to purchasing not just gifts, but certificates from many of our wonderful Morrisville small businesses. Also, since after Thanksgiving, I will not be cooking the rest of the weekend, looking forward to ordering takeout from quite a few. And you, just to, just to add, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I'm really so happy and thankful to be, to be in Morrisville, to be on the council in Morrisville. And we have something really special here, and I just hope that we all take a minute to reflect on that over the weekend.
Excellent. Town Manager Page, anything for staff this evening?
It's like to read. Good evening, council. I have two updates for you this evening. The first one is related to the Morrisville Carpenter Road Project. We have issued a notice for some night work that will be occurring. It's been scheduled for tomorrow, November the 23, starting at 7 p.m. until 2 a.m. November the 24. And this night work is necessary to install traffic signal cables under the asphalt. The work will take place on the four westbound lanes at the intersection with Davis Drive, so those will be the lanes as we are going now, driving from Town Hall towards Davis Drive, all the four lanes on the right. They will be installing traffic signal loops or cables on one lane at a time, so they'll work at one lane and close the other, close the other, close the lane that they're going to be working on, and move to a lane at a time that will operate under traffic control during that time. Notice has been sent out to all the HOAs, as well all the businesses in the area. We have also distributed notices through press release, text message, email, and phone call. So we have tried to make sure that the notice go out, especially with the short timeframe that we are trying to work in. We're trying to get this work done prior to the paving that will be starting next Monday. As you know, temperatures are dropping, and the paving season starts getting very, very short for us to be able to do the work as we come to the end of this project. So it's critical for us to be able to do this work now, prior to paving, so we're not having to disturb the pavement after it has been installed. So one of the things that I would just highlight, and it's been included in the notice, is one of the things that residents will expect to have is obviously there's going to be disruption with noise, so be noise associated with the saw cutting of asphalt. It will be intermittent as they work through the different lanes and the work of installing the traffic signal loops. And we expect the work to be done prior to 2 o'clock in the morning, and I have accounted until that time to allow time for cleanup and traffic control reset. Any questions with that update?
Nope, I think we're good.
Okay. I'll move on to the next one, then. So the next update is related to the proposed Wake Rapid Bus Transit Extension. As you may remember, back in, in August, Danielle Kietrich and Representative from Campo provided an update to Town Council as to the, where the study was and where we were heading in the next phases. We are now at Phase 3 of the study, and we, this, part of this Phase 3 includes a public engagement process that is open until December the 16. The engagement associated with this phase is focused on presenting alternative two as a draft recommended alignment for public feedback. As you may recall, there were three alternatives presented in that presentation. Alternative two is actually the one that follows NC 54, Jocks Out to Evans Road, and McCrimmon Parkway extension via Western Parkway. While alternative two is the one included for the feedback, Campo has developed some informational handout that provides information on all three alternatives for general information. An important detail to keep in mind is that the rapid bus between Cary and RTP will not be true rapid bus with a dedicated bus lane, but it's more of a faster bus. And that's something that was mentioned, so we just want to remind that and highlight that detail. And one other thing that it, I wanted to highlight is that the extension service is not anticipated to be operational until after 2035. So that's kind of the, the timeline that has been provided along with that information. At the conclusion of the public comment period, that again ends on December the 16, the major investment study will be wrapped up, and the identified alignment in the study is critical because this is the information that will be used for them to seek the funding that is needed for this project. Council members and public in general are invited to visit the study website to view a handout that they provide summarizing the study, the progress that has been made, and the recommendations of the study. The website where the information can be found is wakebrtextensionsstudy.com. Repeated wakebrtextensionsstudy.com, and we'll make sure we'll provide this to you as well. So comments can be provided via email or via phone, and those are detailed on that particular website. All the information is, there's a really good handout. So again, just for the purpose of those that are viewing or listening, the deadline for that is December the 16, and it's a great opportunity for everyone to get involved and provide their comments. Staff is drafting a letter that will be provided to Town Council for your review and approval before we send it out. In addition to the collective letter that we will be drafting, council members are welcome to share individual comments if you feel inclined to do so. We will provide this information to you in the upcoming version of the news and notes, and it's also, the information is also going to be included in next week in Morrisville. Our communication staff is also utilizing other communication channels to be able to share this information with the public in general, so they are able to also provide the comments as if they feel applicable to them. Any questions on this item?
I would just ask, what is our role in this? I know that when there's a bond, for example, we are not allowed to advocate for, for or against as a group. We can do individuals, but that's kind of iffy. Just to be clear, option two does include what we're hoping is our TOD area as part of the route. So that generally means that we're in favor of that one. Is it our, could it, is it appropriate for our role to be, to encourage our residents to weigh in and say that they're in favor of this? Or what is staff's opinion of that?
When Campo provided the update back in August, they were in favor of allowing public participation as part of this process. And in essence, this is what this Phase 3 is, is allow that public engagement to hear what will provide greater benefits to the communities in the area. On this case, as we have discussed before, alternative one and two, primarily alternative two, is the one that benefits Morrisville the most, and is the one that we are most in favor of. So Town Council could share their comments. They are opening this opportunity for the community to be able to share these comments individually or collectively, and they will take that in consideration. Council members are more than welcome to share information as to, to constituents, as to how to best to provide information to Campo, but this is the great opportunity for it.
Okay. Councilmember Garamella, please.
So you said something like, this will be operational 2035?
Correct.
Twenty, I just wanted to hear that correct.
2035.
Okay. And is that coincide with the light rail, too? Is that the schedule for the light rail, or do you have a date for?
I do not have the detailed schedule. I do not have the detailed schedule of that with me, but...
Okay, all right. And the other question is, you're saying Option 2. What is Option 2, basically? And where will we have a stop, is what my main question is.
Yeah, so the handout that Campo prepared, that it's on their website, we'll send you the link to that handout. The handout does a really good job outlining what each alternative is, and I'm sure once you look at the handout, sorry, it's very well laid out, and it will provide additional information to you, so we'll make sure that we share that information with you.
But I'm fine, you know, but I'm just curious, do you have an answer where the bus stop would be?
We can get that to you, so I don't hold you guys.
Okay. Mayor for Town Johnson?
So Giselle, this letter that we're, the town is going to send then, are you going to have that ready soon for us to look at, by me, prior to the December 13th meeting?
Yes, we are planning on sending that letter out to town council no later than December the 9th, in advance of the December 13th meeting. I'll give you a few days to review it. If we need to make some tweaks, it gives us the opportunity to do so before December the 16th. Our target date to sending it out would be December 14th, December 15th.
Okay, because I'm going back to the comment about how, how do we let the public know kind of what we're all thinking, and I agree, I'm looking at the map right now. The map is very clear, so, and Alternative 2 is the one that we all kind of preferred, or at least I've preferred, I don't know if we all weighed in, but... So the release of that letter to the public will be helpful for the public to know kind of what we're all thinking and how beneficial Alternative 2 is. But of course, the public can choose to weigh in any way they want individually, so... Okay, so we won't bless that letter until the next meeting on the 13th then? That's the plan?
That was our plan. If it will be beneficial to you for us to prepare the letter earlier than that, we will be more than happy to do so.
Okay.
I want to clarify, the intention of the letter is to present the letter as a collective letter to Campo, not to the community. However, the language in the letter, you may find it beneficial as you advocate one way or another. And if that will be beneficial to you, we more than likely, we more than happy will prepare that draft letter earlier than the date I mentioned, so that you have that information.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I mean, then we have to kind of do that through email, I guess, but I think that would be helpful, I think.
That'd be helpful. Does any council member have an issue with staff preparing a letter for our approval over email? That'd be okay, because I think having that in hand will help us to put that out on social media and let our community know how important it is for them to weigh in and our thoughts on that item.
I would agree with that. I think the more, the more the public weighs in, the better. There's one option that is not good at all, so, for the town of Morrisville in the future, so I think that we need, is, I think that would be clear to anybody that looks at the map, though, too, so, but anyhow, I think that all would be helpful.
I think you have consensus to prepare that sooner. That's all right with staff.
We'll do so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate those updates. Anything else, Town Manager Page? Okay. Excellent. At this time, we are set for a break of 15 minutes, so why don't we go ahead and reconvene at 7:50. Town Manager Page, ready to reconvene? Okay. It's, we're coming back into order. At this time, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Garamella, who joined the meeting towards the end of the last session. And we always give everyone a chance to indicate if there's any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest. Is there anything you'd like to share with the rest of the agenda? No? Okay, thank you, sir. We have two work sessions tonight, a legislative advocacy agenda discussion and a capital investment program policy discussion. Aaron L. Hudson, our Strategic Performance Manager, will facilitate the work session. Ms. Hudson?
Right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we are seeking consensus on your identified priority focus areas or any position statements that council may want to include in a final advocacy resolution. Some things we're going to cover. We're going to offer you some prompting questions and provide some information that'll help aid you in this discussion. We're also going to highlight a few details about the work that the NCLM, the League Legislative Policy Committee has been doing, and how that work aligns with your discussion, and we'll wrap up with how best to move forward following this meeting. So if you'll allow me to move quickly through a couple of slides, we'll get to your questions and facilitate your discussion. So following your October 25th work session, we shared some of those preliminary staff recommended focus areas that you might consider, and we followed up and we sought some additional feedback from you, and we also sought some feedback from staff. In that feedback, we were really looking for any themes, commonalities, or opportunities where we might narrow or find some synthesized top priorities that were identified for the town, and any priorities that might have broader applicability statewide as well. We weren't surprised by the feedback, pleased to share that there was really natural alignment in ideas offered by both council and staff. So beginning with council, you were asked to provide your feedback or your input on those topics that were originally approved in your 2020 advocacy agenda, feedback on the preliminary staff recommended items we had provided, and any additional items that you may propose. So what you see before you is a list of identified focus areas in priority order from top to bottom, and that's based on the prioritization and supporting comments that you provided in the feedback that we've gathered. So there on your left, you see that identified priority focus area, and then the bullets to the right are just some of those individual interest areas. So essentially, again, what we did is we synthesized that feedback, we looked for consensus areas for themes. Council really offered us a wide range of feedback with some natural alignment. Some of the individual ideas that were proposed, the top three priorities that you shared were a revenue toolkit or additional revenue options, local transportation mobility funds, and then there was a tie for third, to restore municipal authority and aesthetics, preserve local authority, and mental health crisis training. So we grouped where there were similar ideas, and we bucketed those into theme areas, so that's where you see that green focus area on the left. We then developed some broad statements that might be used for consideration or discussion, if you may want to wordsmith those and have those, that language any different, and use those individual ideas and those topics and those bullets to the right to help you move that forward. The blue bullets just denotes an opportunity for regional or broader appeal. There across the bottom, you see some of those carryover items that were considered in your approved 2020 advocacy agenda, and those really received some mixed feedback. What I mean by that is you may have indicated neutral support, or they didn't support those moving forward, or wanted them to move forward but be reworded. So that's really an opportunity for council to consider if that needs to be sustained as something that you would support a position on in an advocacy resolution or not. Moving forward with our staff feedback. We reached out to our department head group, and we really asked them to consult and collaborate with their department's staff. They also received the preliminary staff recommended items that were previously provided to council, and they were asked to share any major issues or topics from their own specific work areas that had townwide or broader appeal. Also, still the same here, listed those focus area priorities in order from top to bottom based on their feedback. The top three individual priorities provided by staff were local transportation funding, which is very similar to council's second top priority, mental health crisis training, which is similar to council's third individual priority, and again, a tie for third here, local revenue options, local development authority, and NC DOT project oversight. So again, very similar to council's first and third individual priorities. So again, because of that similarity in theme, we used those same broad statements that we used for council focus areas and followed that same process with the blue bullets denoting where there might be an opportunity for broader regional appeal. Had a lot of really great additional comments and feedback from both council and staff, so happy to expand on any of these if needed. I do want to note that staff did share that while enhanced support for local government, employee training and development, be that mental health training, be that DEI programming and training, while they do feel that is a top priority, they also did indicate that they felt that was either already being addressed or could be addressed at the local level without legislative interference or action, so just something to be mindful of there. So let's focus on what council might want to consider or include in an advocacy resolution. So priorities number two and three here, restate or are very similar to an already established core principle by the NCLM. So what is council comfortable moving forward to include in an advocacy resolution, being mindful that we're going to be sharing this document with our collaborative partners so that they can help continue to move our work forward over the next two years? Is there an issue or a need or a position that council feels is really specific and unique to Morrisville that needs to be stated in an advocacy resolution? So I'll ask you to just sort of hold those questions and think about those for a moment, and I want to cover a couple of things about what the NCLM Legislative Policy Committee has been doing. So that policy group, which I serve on and a couple of other folks do as well, has been working over the last several weeks. The league has solicited goal ideas from all league member organizations across the state. In total, there was participation from 111 cities and towns. They got over 400 goal ideas submitted. We have worked with guidance from league staff to really review and sort of tweak and work through those submitted goals, excuse me, to really try to develop them into actionable goal statements. What the league does is ask that they be broken into A, B, and C lists. C lists do not have the same appeal or applicability, or they're not able to be actionable, and they may fall under some other authority. B goals have appeal, but they may not rise to the same level of urgency, and any goals under the A list are the ones that are the top priority, have the broadest range of appeal, would meet the greatest need. So aiming for about 15 or so goals is typically what the league shoots for, and I believe the, two years ago, they had 17 goals approved. So all of those goals are considered under the umbrella of the league's core municipal principles, and essentially, from this point, the recommended advocacy goals that they have will be shared with the league board at their December 8th meeting. Then, any additional changes or modifications that are made by the league board will be recommended and put forward to the full league membership for a vote. As a member of the league, Morrisville does get a vote, so we will have one vote per municipality, so we'll have a voting delegate, and we'll get to cast our vote in favor or opposition of those recommended goals. That vote will probably be late December, early January. I believe it was January in the last time. So I'm going to go back to those questions I posed. What is it that council really wants to make sure is included in an advocacy resolution? What do you want to move forward? Is there a specific position you want stated? As I mentioned, we do have a couple of those priorities that restate or are very similar to core municipal principles with the league. Much, if not all, of the focus areas and individual ideas that were posed by council and staff really do fall under a core municipal principle with the league. We can always state support for those municipal principles in your advocacy resolution. I double-checked, that is what we did in 2020. You stated some individual positions, and then you also stated support for the league's advocacy goals. So just want to pause here and see what council's thoughts are and allow you to have that discussion, and staff will take direction from there. And I'm happy to move any slides forward back.
Okay, looking for people to indicate their interest in sharing. I'd be in favor of moving forward to all three of these, especially 2 and 3, which I think are important, although they will be, I think, echoed by the league. I think these will be talking points that would emphasize the fact that we really want to keep local development authority and that we could really use some other revenue streams. We've been beating that drum, as has NCLM, for a while, and I think it might be good to continue to do that. And the first one, as you mentioned, that's not really, we don't really need their help with that. I think that we're working on the training internally, but I'd support all three at this point. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Skrogan-Johnson?
Couple slides to, I think it was slide 2, probably? Oh, slide, one more. Okay, this one. So I'm not necessarily advocating for putting this on our legislative agenda. I think that would be a waste of paper, but I do just want to make the point that unfunded mandates and not, and mandates that without establish, an established funding source to offset municipal expenses, and particularly the one, the mandate on public school class sizes for grades K to 3, I do think that that's an issue that directly affects Morrisville because our elementary schools are capped, and I'm not aware of any research that suggests that our schools, which were already high-performing, have gotten better since the cap. And so, I mean, I don't want to add it to our legislative agenda, because, like I said, I, you know, I think we should shoot for the possible, but I do think that that's an issue that's, that's really important in Morrisville and that people should realize that we should be able to do something about that. We can't because of the legislature that we have, but that, I think, this is a legislative area where Morrisville is actively being impacted, and if we should reckon, I don't think we should waste, you know, waste time on advocacy boards, but I don't know what to do about it, but I did just want to say, I think that this is having a major impact on Morrisville children, on Morrisville schools.
Thank you for sharing. Anything else? Councilmember Robati? Okay. Councilmember Skrogan-Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Erin, could you clarify a little bit more about, number one, the enhanced support for local government, employee training, and development? Was that just council, or was that combined with the staff feedback as well?
Yes, so initially, this was the focus area we identified based on council feedback, but again, felt that it also applied based on the individual idea feedback that we got from staff. So we used the same focus areas here.
Okay, because within that, there's something that's very, you know, impactful for our staff, is the mental health and crisis training, and it seems like that has never been funded anywhere successfully like it needs to be. So it's not just employee training and development, but it's like, and support, you know, for our staff. So maybe tweak that labeling a little bit more because it's more about supportive staff? I don't know. I'm going to think about this a little bit more now that I've heard your presentation, but it's not just training. I think we need to think of it broader than just training for staff, and it's risen to the, number one, for me, because of the mental health component of it. But as far as legislative advocacy, I think... But as far as legislative advocacy, I think in that realm where we can ask our legislators to fight the hardest for Morrisville is to preserve that local development authority and input. That is something tangible. We can give them examples of the stormwater rules that were modified, that were unfavorable to our watershed and several of our current programming. We could point to other aesthetic standards where it, it helps with the community and so forth. So that's a tangible one. We can give really good examples. We could also work on number one, but maybe some of that labeling will, or consideration of the, the category will help us communicate more effectively to the legislators. Thank you.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Well, first of all, I want to say that I completely agree with Councilmember Boddy's point on the legislative, the policy reasons for advocating for, against the smaller class size, because I think there's, when you say smaller class size, I think most people in Morrisville don't understand that that is what's resulting in overcrowded schools. So I think it's important for us to be able to equivocate that because a lot of people out there think, well, lower class size is good, but that's really what the issue that is affecting the schools. So I think that's an important one. I think that the other thing I would be curious about is that, you know, this is the advocacy agenda. I'm fine with these goals, but I think there's a difference between advocacy and strategy because the reality is that, you know, the makeup of legislature now, even though they're only one vote away from a super majority in the House, they have a super majority in the Senate, so the game has really changed because the Speaker said that they're, they're going to have a few Democrats that may be siding with him on certain things. And so with that being said, I think we've got to be extremely focused. And so I've always said this, but I think anytime you, when you went back to the previous slide, when it's expanding new revenue streams, I think transportation funding for local governments could be really an issue that we can be very clear with, both Republicans and Democrats, that with declining revenues to DOT and projects kicking back, any kind of incentives for local governments to get more funding to accelerate the road projects is important for the growth that we're facing and for the economic development. I mean, if I had Speaker Moore right here, right now, I would tell him, look, you've come here before to Morrisville, you look at all these companies that are coming in, you can give us the incentives to accelerate these road projects. So I think when, Councilmember Skrogan-Johnson says, simplify the message, I think it's critically important that we, we hammer in on one or two that we know we're going to be able to get support on both sides of the aisle. And I think infrastructure, just like the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, which celebrated its one-year anniversary last week, that this is something I think that really could be important. So I just want the council and the staff to think about that because I think if we go in with too many goals and too many things, I think it's just going to get lost in all the things these guys are going to be dealing with in the long session. That's just my opinion, but.
Would anyone else like to weigh in and give staff some feedback on what we've seen? Mayor Pretum-Johnson.
So Erin, I thank you for this because I think you have narrowed it down and put it into buckets that make a lot of sense, and I would support the, the three focus areas that you have identified here. I think, you know, revenue, new revenue streams, hopefully preserving our development authority and input, and, and then the, however, if you want to tweak the wording up, but I think it's fine, the support for local government employee training and development. So yeah, I think you've done a fabulous job, so thank you.
So those ones that you have shared, has this been helpful? Do you have what you need?
Yes, and what I'd also like to do quickly is just show council the draft recommended advocacy goals that we have that will be presented to the league board on December 8th. Sorry, it's very sensitive mouths here. And I've just taken some time to read through them several times, actually, and tried to highlight where I thought there was some natural alignment between what council felt were priority areas and also what staff felt were priority areas. So again, they have the A-level goals, which are the top priority, broadest applicability, and then they also have the B-level goals. Doesn't mean they're not a priority, doesn't mean they're not important, they just may not rise to that same level, so they may not be in that final list for approval. So just wanted you to see, there is that very clear natural alignment. You know, I think we are seeing similar issues statewide, you know, with support for transportation funding, you know, looking for additional support for mental health training and crisis support, looking to, you know, I think everyone is probably looking for revenue alternatives or revenue replacements, so didn't want to let that moment pass by without at least showing that, and I'm happy to share this with council as well. So real quickly, I will just wrap up. If I may, offer a couple of options to town council. We have a couple of ways that we can approach this. So right now, we are scheduled essentially to bring you a brief inaction item at your December 13th meeting, and staff is prepared and can have this information ready for you to review and consider and vote that night. We can have the, the language included to include these items. We can also include language that says that you will also support recommended NCLM advocacy goals when adopted or as approved, again, very similar to the language that was included with your 2020 resolution, if council is comfortable with that. We won't know those final approved goals, like I said, probably until January. Or alternatively, we could hold and not vote on this item until January. So that's really probably at council's discretion at this time, that I would ask which way you would prefer to go.
Yes, it would help us to know whether or not there will be advocacy opportunities between those two timeframes.
I'm inclined to say no. I do not, I've not been able to find an actual date that the legislature will take in at the start of 2023. I know that the Town and State Dinner is scheduled for February, which is where the league is sort of poised to debut their advocacy goals, so we'll all be getting invitations for that, and that will be an opportunity. So again, I'm, I'm sort of inclined to think that there's probably not going to be a lot of opportunity for interaction between the end of December, early to mid-January.
I'd ask if it'd be possible to essentially draft it as a brief on the 13th because the way you've presented it is really helpful, but then the language of our actual goals and that resolution looks different. And I think we, it'd be good for us to take a peek at that, maybe on the 13th, make sure it has what we want and that it prioritized those top three, and then maybe also includes class size, even though we know that's something that we can't really move the needle on, the emphasis of transportation, how that might be a good goal. Because you mentioned the three big ones, but then you also mentioned some of the, the sort of sub-goals. So I think we'd be very interested in seeing how that'll, that'll play out in the actual resolution.
So hearing that comment, if you'd like, what I can do is, is take a stab at drafting the resolution, highlighting those priority areas, and then really some of those that you've identified as your highest priority and where they fit under those. Would that be agreeable and, and sort of meet that need? And have that drafted and prepared for you to look at on December 13th as a brief.
Could that be a helpful step for everybody? Sounds like that's a great plan, Ms. Hudson. Thank you.
Okay. So finally, just sort of in the interim, and Mayor Colley raised a great point. At this time, just some of the things that will be focused on over the next few weeks and months is really just doing one of the things that Morrisville does best, and that is reinforcing and forging those relationships with our delegates, the folks who are furthering and helping support the work of our town. A lot of us have strong relationships with the league, with NLC, with some of these delegates already. So this is just a good chance to reach out. Staff already has some things planned so that we can do some outreach, and then just help sort of keep those lines of communication open until they are settled in those new seats, and we can share these advocacy opportunities with them, and then see what we might be able to partner together with as they move forward in this next biennium.
Wonderful. Councilmember Boddy with a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, what metrics does the NCLM provide about the effectiveness of their advocacy?
That is a good question. I would have to go back and, and look. I can, I can get you that information, though.
I would just be interested in, in what areas they've been able to actually move the needle.
I can get you that.
Councilmember Rao, did you have something to add?
Oh, no, sorry.
And if you have the ability and bandwidth to let us know when the swearings in are, especially for our delegation, I think that it would be a good step for us to attend those if possible.
I'll, I'll certainly see what I can find out.
Yeah, and if we all share with each other, I think that would be great for us to show our support for, especially the new ones, we're getting sworn in. It goes a long way to building the relationship because that's a very happy day, as it is when we were sworn in, if you can think of it similarly. Okay. Thank you very much.
Well.
At this point, we'll move on to item 13B, Asenboy. Michael James, fiscal recovery officer, and Jeannie Hucks, director of management services, will facilitate the next work session.
Good evening, council. Hard to believe, but we are fast approaching the fiscal year 24 budget development process. And of course, as all, as you all know, the CIP is a critical component of that process. And so the discussion that we'll have tonight on the CIP policy is, is an important step in that process. So really what we're looking to do, start with just some brief background on our CIP policy and then kind of talk about the goals for your discussion tonight. So we do have a CIP policy in place that kind of guides our CIP project development process. That current policy calls for a significant update to policy and the projects every four years, what we consider to call a major update. So we're in the midst of a major update right now. The policy also establishes a team of staff members, so we've been meeting since late August to update all of the projects, kind of looking at the project scopes, cost estimates, looking for alignment with the town's strategic goals and plans. Then what we have for your discussion tonight is the towns, or the town teams' work on the staff, on the policy itself. So have some recommendations to share with you tonight. And really what we're asking you to do is provide your feedback on the evaluation criteria. So this is what you think is important for us to consider as we evaluate and prioritize all of the capital projects that we have. And then that will be something that the team takes back, applies your criteria, and ultimately brings you a prioritized list for your kind of initial consideration of the projects at the winter retreat. So that's kind of where we're going. Let's share briefly a little bit about the membership of our team. So we have representation from engineering, public works, planning, and then budget and strategic management. I shared a little bit about the team roles, but we, so we review and update the projects, prioritization factors, which will be the bulk of our discussion tonight, and then ultimately, after you adopt a policy with prioritization factors, we'll apply those factors and bring you back a prioritized list at your retreat. Really two major policy updates that we want to share with you tonight. The first is really where you're, we're looking for your feedback on, and then the second piece is just an update that we've made to the policy that we're kind of sharing with you for information tonight. So on the left side here on this slide, you kind of have the current prioritization factors, our proposed factors in the update on the right. I mean, you should have in front of you at your desks a brief definition of each of these components. Before I go into the changes that we made, I just actually would like to, if you'll let me skip to the next slide and kind of talk through two of the most significant changes that we made, and then we'll come back and kind of look at these side by side. The first significant change is actually, in the current criteria, the project cost was the number one prioritization factor with the heaviest weight. So the team, just looking at the factors together and thinking about the prioritization process, really felt like the cost comes from putting together a funding plan, you know, setting priorities, identifying what's important to you, what projects are of interest to you. Cost is always going to be a consideration. It naturally constrains the CIP, it naturally constrains what we bring to you as recommendations in terms of what's feasible and what's in line with our fund balance policies. So, and staff capacity is another consideration as, as part of that as well. So we really felt like the, the point to consider cost is as we're developing the funding plan. We have pulled that, but we didn't want to, you know, we didn't want to make it, make it seem like that's not important to us because that's always an important consideration. And on service impacts, we had a single category in the current policy that addresses service levels, but we felt like weighing something that, a project that would be required to maintain an existing level of service is pretty different from engaging in a project that will expand or create a new service. So we felt like in terms of figuring out how to prioritize projects that do those different things, we wanted to distinguish between those and weigh them separately. So those are the significant changes that we've really made to the criteria, and I'll just go back now to share this so you can see them kind of side by side. And I guess for sake of discussion tonight, really what we're asking of you is to think about what's maybe missing that you would like for us to consider as we go through all the projects. And what would you like for us to, or what do you feel like, if anything, we need to move forward? Not necessarily focusing so much on, you know, what the ranking is or the number is for each criteria, but what's really important to you that we haven't considered here, if there's anything like that, and what would you like for us to move forward? So I think at the end, I'll go ahead and give the brief update on the Streets PIL, and I think to come back to the prioritization discussion at the end so you guys have time to discuss. I'll go ahead and give the quick update, and then we'll kind of come back to this slide and look, look through that together if that works for you guys. All right. All right, so shifting gears to the Streets payment in lieu, a policy update that we have included. As I think you already know, state law and our UDO authorized the town to collect payments in lieu of required street improvements. Proposal that we're, what we've included in the proposed CIP policy update is basically outlining some conditions under which a town would apply flexibility that we already have in the state law and in our UDO. So we have some PIL funds that have been, you know, sitting in the town's bank accounts for some time now, so our goal is really to, to really think about when there are scenarios that we might be able to utilize some of that flexibility and authority that we have to make improvements and put the dollars to work. But these are, this slide kind of outlines what those conditions would be, where we may, instead of funding, using the PIL funds for the specific item that the PIL was initially collected, the law would allow us to use it for relate other street improvements that are in close proximity to that development. So some of the conditions that we've outlined where we might consider doing that are listed there, so there's three that we have added. So first being that if we had the payment in a reserve fund for a period of greater than five years, improvement is not likely to occur as originally expected, and if, and the funds were not collected as a refundable improvement. UDO does outline some improvements that are refundable. And then the last one there is just if the certificate of occupancy has been issued for the development that originally made the payment. So this is not saying that we would, in all of these cases, use that flexibility, but these are some conditions where we would put the dollars to work for street improvements. I, I think it actually may be helpful to go ahead and talk about the next steps before we can. we kick off your discussion, just as a reminder of kind of what we're looking for from you tonight. So obviously, you'll have your discussion on the criteria tonight. We would love if you would be ready to come back and adopt on December 13th. And the reason for that being just with the timing of the winter retreat being in late January, the 13th adoption would allow the team to go ahead and get to work on the prioritization. And I do just want to remind you that the prioritization factors are really just the first pass that staff is using to take, bring you back a prioritized list. That will then start your process of prioritizing the projects as you'd like. So it's really a tool for us to prioritize projects for you based on what you've told us is important, but it's just sort of kicking off the process for you. Once you adopt, we'll work on that prioritization and then bring that back to you at the winter retreat. So that's kind of where we're going and what we're asking of you tonight. So I'll shift back to that prioritization factor slide, so you can see those side by side. And then I just open it up and ask those questions again. What's important to you that's not here? And then what would you, what do you feel like maybe needs to move up?
Mayor Protem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
So, Michael, I just have, just to clarify on this, maybe you said this and I missed it. I apologize. But the green arrows and the blue arrows, that just means those moved up and?
Yeah. So yeah, maybe actually, let me, give me just one second, if that's all right, to kind of walk through some of these changes, too. So.
So these are in an order, too, then?
Yeah. So basically, the way it works is, you know, each category is going to have a weight. They are listed in the order of that weight. And then within each category, the team would sort of define what, you know, what gets a rating within that, you know? How, you know, so each one is sort of like the, you know, for example, for number one, for safety, what's the extent of the safety need for that project? And we would come up with a way to score that. So safety, really, the team felt like that should be the first priority, is safety and just considering how much a project would impact a safety concern or reduce a safety hazard. Mandates moved up for a couple of reasons. I think, one, you know, if it's an external mandate that we're getting from state or federal government, you know, we view that as a requirement and a commitment, we would meet that. That's probably not as prevalent in municipalities as it might be in a county government situation. But this category does also include self-imposed mandates or things that we've committed to or adopted in policies and plans. So an example could be, you know, we signed a development services agreement for the town center projects. We've sort of committed to those responsibilities. So it would include that as well. So again, that's kind of getting at those commitments. Then we talked, you know, I kind of went through a little bit about continuity of service and the emerging service demand a little bit already. So those are just kind of a split out of what was previously this just single level of service. And strategic goal alignment, just really feel like that kind of guides everything that we do in the town. So we felt like that's really critical to consider as a pretty high factor in terms of how we prioritize projects and alignment with strategic plan. Now, I'd say the ones that moved down are not really a result of anything that we're trying to deprioritize just as much as the other factors that we have up towards the top. So it's just a result of that.
Okay, thank you. And just another question I have, too, when, sorry, now I got to find it. When we talked about the streets payment in lieu policy and talk about payments that have been retained in a, in reserve for a period of greater than five years, why five years? Is there any thought behind that?
Yeah, so I guess a couple of considerations. One is just, you know, it is a restrictive source. So it, you know, there, it can't just be used for anything. So there's a, you know, a time consideration there, I think, in the development world. And just, I guess I should also share, too, you know, planning staff reviewed this. They actually advised kind of the five-year period, just based on development timelines. And, you know, five years in the planning world, I don't think is a really long time. So that was partly with their input as well. It's not a magic number. I think, again, it's just with the goal of getting the dollars to work.
And that's fine. I was just curious what was behind the number five.
This, I think, five came from a couple of years ago. I remember Town Hall Drive, like when we were doing that, we took the funds and then, and also the one here in Starmer, like.
Oh, yes.
That, you know, when we're taking funds, if you don't use it back, then what good is it?
Totally. No, I, yeah.
Those were, those were the times when, you know, we had set the five years.
Yeah.
As a criteria at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Those are the only questions I have now. As far as the, you're asking for feedback, then, on the proposed 1 through 10 criteria? Is that, that's what you want feedback on tonight?
Yes. And then we would bring back the proposed policy for your adoption, once you've kind of provided that feedback. Yeah, that's, that's really the focus. We have some other updates, but they're really just to other portions of the policy, but they're primarily just technical clarifying. These are really the impactful updates to the process in your, in the prioritization.
So I don't, I don't, I don't think I have a problem with the order in which they're in right now. I guess my question would be, you know, what, and I can't, if I had a, you know, if I could look into the future, what if something comes up that we want to move forward that doesn't kind of meet this? Or what do we do with that, those extraordinary circumstances? Maybe that's my question.
Got it.
Ordinary.
Got it. Yeah, I think, well, for one, I guess just thinking about the purpose of this criteria and how it's applied, it's really for us to prioritize the known projects at that time. And it's a starting point for you to consider as you weigh your own prioritization for the projects. The other thing, I think we did try to somewhat address that in number five there with the emerging service demand. So I guess an example I think of is like the Dog Park, actually, that, you know, that we're, the project we're working on now, that's probably an emerging service demand type project. And there was some availability of funding with the ARPA funds that, you know, now we, you know, we're not necessarily going back for those when that, at the time that those came up and applying all this criteria, but we're trying to address, I think, things like that in the policy to the extent we can, and we have known projects. Not sure if that.
Yeah, no, that, that, I'm not sure even what I'm.
I mean, I think we can only apply the criteria to the projects that are known and are, you know, have concepts and are scoped out.
Got it. Got it. Okay. No, I'm, I think you've done a great job. I like the changes that you made. You're right, the project cost. We always talk about cost anyhow, and that that's going to come into play eventually anyhow. And I like how you broke out the level of service, too, with the continuity of service and then emerging demand. So I think you did an excellent job. So, thank you.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Excuse me. I like the proposed, one of the changes you've made. I know that the purpose of this meeting isn't to talk about specific projects, but just, I like this idea of continuity of service and emerging service demand. At the senior holiday lunch this weekend, I met a lot of seniors that were concerned that they may outgrow the space that we have. And they kept asking, when can we have a larger senior center? But I think it could be maybe a community center. And so, you know, I think continuity of service, emerging service demand are good. When you look at availability of funding, perhaps the town center project could be a trigger that might be able to accelerate some of these priorities. Because as we're looking to build out the town center, I don't know, we've taught in the past about having a larger kind of community center there. And so that could be something that we could meet a demand, you know, meet a need, you know, CIP, but accelerate it and talk to our development partner about that. So that's just something I want to bring aware. And if the seniors tonight are listening, just to them know that we have opportunities where we can do this. But I like these new continuity of service, emerging service demand, it meets that list test. Availability of funding, the town center could affect that and fiscally efficient, right? So I think you've got four. So that just use as an example. I don't want, you know, of course, this isn't immediately go through every project, but just wanted to bring that up for council's attention and your attention as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Skargan Johnson.
Yeah, on the strategic goal alignment, I, so I think the strategic goal alignment is one of those things that much, much price. We have to consider as part of every, in fact, I think that alignment with our strategic goals for the town is table stakes for any project. And I, I think that, like, it's up there and it's pretty highly weighted, you know, it's number four out of 10. But I'm wondering, can you give me an example of a project that would score low on that, that we would still be considering doing? Like, I'm not sure that that's really a criteria. If every project on the CIP isn't scoring, isn't in alignment with our strategic goals, I don't, I'm not sure we should be doing it.
Thanks. Yeah, I think that's a fair point. I'm not sure that we're necessarily pursuing projects that don't, in some way align. I think it's maybe just a consideration of, is it, is it tied to a specific goal, objective, and initiative in the plan? Or is it more generally tied to one of the categories and not necessarily something that's clearly spelled out in the plan? But I think it's a fair point that, I don't know that we're necessarily, yes, I think it's always a consideration and a factor. And I don't know that we're, I can't necessarily think of an example of a project that would score low. It's just maybe just relative to other projects that may have more direct alignment to something specific in the, in the plan. If that makes sense.
That definitely makes sense. I guess I just, so I would, I would be happier if, if scoring in each category was, was objective, you know, not more tied or less tied than other projects on the, on the list, but can be objectively evaluated. Does it enhance safety in the town? How much, you know? Is it related to a mandate? Yes or no? That seems pretty clear. Strategic goal alignment, to me, is very fuzzy. And I, I'm not sure about that one in terms of including it on the list by which we're going to evaluate, evaluate everything. I think, I just think that we should pursue projects that are, to me, that's like, I don't know, I think that one's a lot like, a lot like cost, where, you know, we're saying, project cost, you have to know. Like, if we, if we put that one at the top, we're only going to ever do little things. And if we're looking at everything, like, we can't quantify strategic goal alignment. And so I think that that's, I'm not sure that's a great criteria. I would think that we would want to either, like, either it's a yes or no. Is it tied to a specific, a specific item on a specific, on another specific plan? Like, maybe it's just a flat-out yes or no. But I would like to see something more as a definition than the extent to which a project advances the town's adoption plan, because I think that that is very subjective. And the other thing is, this is maybe just kind of a meta point, but you, you do an evaluation of the CIP every four years. And the last one was in 2019. And 2019 was the year that Donna and I got elected, which is making me think about that. And I think also, trying to remember who else ran that year, might have been Mayor Protem and Satish and me and Donna. So there was a potential in 2019 for you to do a CIP review and then for four council seats to turn over. And in fact, two did turn over. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more, it wouldn't be better to, to move the, the four-year timeline, which I'm fine with. But if you did that, let's say that it had started in 2020 and would start again in 2024, then you would be, at that time, you would be doing it with the most recently elected council, and everyone there would have two years in which to execute the vision that they laid out. Whereas doing it the year in an actual election year, the potential is there for, for four, three or four people to drive that CIP forward and make those decisions and then immediately be off the council, and the rest of the council stuck with those decisions for four more years. So that's just, I mean, that's kind of, like I said, kind of a meta point, just something to think about. But, you know, I think, I do think that it's important, that, like, I think timing, timing is everything in life, you know?
Right, yeah. No, I totally understand. That's a fair point. And there are lighter updates that happen more frequently than what we're kind of go through with what we consider a major update, too. But that's.
But, you know, but often, I think that, you know, the election, the election cycle is such that people, people run for office on issues like what we're doing with the CIP. You know, that, like, they want to change things. They want to change our direction. They want to change what we're spending money on. That's, in fact, the most common thing that people do run on. So I think that, you know, I'm just saying that moving it forward a couple of months, in my opinion, would just, would just allow the council, the existing council that's, that's working on it, the most time together to then execute it.
Councilmember Skargan Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Robati, for some insightful, you know, explanation on timing.
That's what they pay me for.
I, yeah.
Underneath the big bucks, Nikki.
I hear you on that. I actually wanted to talk a little bit about items six and seven. I do like this list. I think it is a great way of looking at the different factors that we are prioritizing the CIP. I don't see it as a way of, you know, the, the project with the highest score might not be the best fit for the town at the time. It just, there's a lot of pushes and pulls throughout this. So for fiscal efficiencies, which is number six, I was wanting to verify my assumptions about, does this relate to carrying costs? You know, if we implement this CIP program or obtain this piece of equipment, there might be a higher return on investment, you know, for this project versus another project? Like, if we have an electric car and we invest in electric charging stations, the efficiencies that we receive might be higher for that than for something else that we purchase or built.
Right. I think that's pretty much the intent of that category. I guess, like, for example, if there was a project that significantly improved the efficiency of a building, and it generates savings and operational costs that lessen the burden on, say, the general fund, that could be an example of the type of project. So it's considering the extent to which the project would generate those types of efficiencies.
Solar panels comes to mind when you were describing that.
Right. And so it is a consideration. And some of that is weighing the longer term because, you know, you may have.
Right, right.
Larger initial costs, as you were saying, and then evaluating the returns down the road. Yep.
Okay. So it's just, I wanted to get that assumption right because the, just the fiscal efficiencies can mean so many things, right? But I appreciate that. The other item is availability of funding. And I think this is one of the most dynamic areas that we're experiencing today. We're getting capital projects for roads where the DOT is asking for money upfront, where they never have before, or they're delaying the reimbursement of project costs a certain amount versus paying in a shorter turnaround time. So that availability of funding, to me, is not just whether there's a level of external funding, but the timing associated with that funding. What, you know, how much does it affect our cash flow? You know, what is that reimbursement? Do we get the money in the beginning? Or do we get it in the middle? Or do we get it based on milestones or even at full completion? That's, I think, where I see category seven being really impactful and helping some of the decision-making, so.
Right. Agree. And I would just say on the timing, too, that's where the funding plan, and actually, the, you know, the recommended CIP that we would bring back would account for the timing of the funding availability, too. So it'd be addressed in that way.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah. Couple of comments. First, I agree with removing the project cost as one of the prioritization factors. I think if we were only looking at project costs, we would just be doing a bunch of little itty-bitty projects and not really making an impact for the residents of our town. And then a couple of other comments I had. I think I think the only comment I would have with the, changing the order of the priority would be with number eight, economic impact. I would like the council to consider moving that up, because if, if a project has the potential to add to our tax base, you know, I think that needs to be a fairly high priority if it's going to generate additional revenue for our town. And then the last comment I had was in regards to what Councilmember Robati said with the strategic goal alignment. I was just thinking of a couple examples here. Could be, I mean, like, the solar panels, even though the solar panels on top of the fire station was not a CIP project, if it, if it was, I mean, that is a strategic, that meets our strategic goal of sustainability. And it doesn't, it, it's not continuity of service. I don't know that it could be an emergent service demand. So, I see the strategic goal alignment category being necessary to prioritize those projects that we have, like the town center. That aligns, that aligns with the strategic goal for the town. I think there are those projects that are more visionary for where we want to take. The town falls more, or would re-kai on that category. I don't, so, those are my thoughts there. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'd say I really appreciate these changes that have been made. I think it'll be really helpful. I see this, as you mentioned, it's a tool, it's a starting point. When we get the priorities, a prioritized list by staff, after they implement all these, we'll have a list in order. But I think that that even is a starting point. And I think the real helpfulness of this is that when we look at the grid and we compare the safety against the emergent service demand of these two things next to each other, and we're trying to decide which one, I think having these 10 items with staff's assessment of how they rate against each other will really help us decide, oh, that's obvious, yes, that project should come first. So I think that this is a really good step. And I think the, the proof will be in the pudding later, when we actually get that list in the retreat and we really dig into it. So I, I'm pleased with how this'll come out at this time. So I applaud you guys for the hard work that got us to this point. And it looks like everyone who's wanted a chance has had one. And now we'll go for a second round to, to just close things up, if we could. I see Councilmember Robati first.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about what, what Councilmember Fender said. And I think she's right. And I'll tell you what would really help me to understand if the prioritization order in these things is correct. I imagine that you're running existing projects through models, different weighting models of these, of, with these factors weighted in different ways, right?
So we, for project, for previous projects, we're done with the existing criteria, but we were waiting for your direction on the updated prioritization factor to kind of restart that and reevaluate all the projects.
So, because what I think is that it would be advisable to get the criteria and the weighting correct first, before we go to retreat with a list of projects and then start tinkering. So, is it possible that we could run a couple of past projects, existing projects, like, I don't, I don't really care which ones, through this, through the model as it exists? Just, I mean, just assigning, assigning the criteria, assigning the weights to the criteria as you would assign them, you know, just as you would in any 1 to 10 list? And then, could we, could we just see, like, kind of how a couple of projects, how that shakes out for a couple of existing projects? Because that's what's going to help me the most with understanding whether we're weighting these par, these prioritization categories correct. I don't know if I'm explaining that right, I'm sorry.
So historically, I would say we, we would like to keep council up here. Tell us what you value, and we will put it in the critical thinking model, and we will do the first pass. The reason why we do the first pass is to give you a place to start. But you, in the end, you will see how it weighs out in that critical thinking model, how it ranks each of the projects, level out or come out into a top 10 list. But it's always going to be in your hands next to whether you want to shift something because you think, okay, the model didn't quite get exactly what I was thinking it was going to result. So it's your decision as an elected body, a collective body, to now move it up to where you think the priority needs to be. And it's just taking a different, taking it through a different pass of a different critical thinking model when you do your paired comparison, or when you do your Eisenhower prioritization tool that we'll have at, at retreat, where you're putting it through what's critical, what's urgent, what's critical but not urgent, and then the paired comparison, do you like this project as compared to this project more? And so it goes through several lenses to really get it vetted out what works, what, what is really your highest level of interest? And this is just a starting place.
Okay, so the expectation of retreat isn't going to be, I mean, you're going to give us obviously a list of projects, and we're going to see how they're weighted. But we're not going to be talking about how to tinker with the, the criteria and the weighting at retreat. You're just going to, you're just going to use these criteria.
Right.
They're going to give us a list of projects, and then I'm going to say, no, I think the dog park needs to be higher, how come that wasn't captured higher? And then you're going to take that information, go back and tinker with the criteria based on, obviously, what we all say.
Yes, ma'am. So, so you're giving us your, your lens through these criteria element to put into this critical thinking model, to do our first pass. We're using your lens to apply, the subject matter experts to apply your interest and your priority interest, to give you a ranking first. And then at retreat, you're going to have a different type of prioritization tool that's going to help you think through it in, in different ways as compared to just this ranking. Does that help?
It does.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
Well, after that conversation, I'm still going to say what I was going to say. I wanted to echo what Councilmember Fender said. I do think economic impact could move up a little bit, but I'm curious as to why you put it in the order you did. Because I would agree with what Councilmember Fender said, that maybe that should weigh a little higher. So why, why did you have it where you have it? Do you remember the kind of thought process? And I'm sure you talked about all of these a lot.
It's so much as a decision to put it at number eight as it was all the other decisions. And so that was it currently, in the current policy, it's at number eight. And the team didn't really recommend moving it or bumping it above any of the other factors. But certainly, that's, you know, this, that's why we're here, is, you know, to get your feedback, whether, you know, if you all would like to, really, your direction to us on how you want to consider the project, so.
And if I, if I could just add, remember, stuff we build for ourselves is not taxable. So you'd really be talking about something, that's not where your impact can be. It is going to be if it's something that allows you to generate other types of revenue. Just relative context for economic impact.
Okay, so like, an aquatics and fitness center where we're charging fees, maybe, where it recoup, you know, or comes close to recouping costs, okay.
Like, town center has an economic...
In town center.
And, like, McCrimmon Extension added.
Economic impact there is it's creating a draw.
Yeah.
We're building something to get people to come to a destination.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Well, you heard two of us. I don't know what, I don't know if Ann was three, but...
Yeah, no, I was three. I was three.
Councilmember Protem?
That was it.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
The example of economic impact, I would say, recently was the half a million dollars for that stream that we built on the spark, so that the whole project could be done. So that was a direct impact of $1.2 billion to the whole overall. I think that's, that's how I see. And, but I have a question on 10, project readiness. We always have been talking about have shovel-ready projects ready. If any money is available, then push it in. Airport Boulevard was one of them, and Marshall Carpenter was one of them. So why is it ranked so low when, actually, when we should be ranked much higher, especially when you're getting matching funds, so that, you know, we can take advantage of them?
Yeah, I guess part of it is, you've got to first decide to get a project shovel-ready. So are there other, I guess I'm thinking, part of that decision-making process is going through the first nine factors to make the decision to fund design, for example, for a project. With the matching funds you're talking about, for example, I think maybe potentially is kind of addressing the availability of funding. Certainly, project readiness can help you get external funding opportunities. I, I guess, maybe the team was thinking more of, you know, that initial decision to do the work or to pursue a project in the first place to get it shovel-ready. But, you know, again, it's another area of...
Yeah, I mean, to say, you know, what you're saying, for me, it's not, you know, a selling point. For me, it's, okay, like, if we have a certain project that we have to do it, then why can't we make it project-ready? And all those on the top will automatically come into it. For example, the fire station, you know, because we had invested an initial before the bond came, that automatically satisfied safety and other things. So, so project readiness is actually a very key factor, where you're showing the citizens that we are doing stuff. Those things are fine on the top, but at the end, end product is which projects are complete. Because that, that's, that's where they look like. Marshall Carpenter, we can say, success. It's complete. Airport Boulevard, McCrimmon, you know, you know, MFC. There are some projects which are, which we had planned for, but all those things come into it. But that's, that's how I, I feel, like, it's facing the citizen's side. So they look at, okay, what did you complete? What did you do? You know, in your two years, or like, downtown, okay, we had, you know, it was, we had Ten Acres, and we went through that thing. It was a kind of project readiness that we had bought. And we are, we're continuing to buy properties, you know, for future enhancements. So I, I strongly feel like putting it 10 is actually like going through those whole laundry list, and then it, it should be like, one of, like, a top priority, I would say, because you can focus on that and then look at the areas around it, you know? Does it satisfy safety? Does it satisfy mandatory or continuous service or strategic goals?
Okay. Good. Good feedback, good discussion. Like I mentioned, I think I'm good with all this. If we think of economic impact slash ROI, then that also matters for our internal projects, not just economic impact and tax base. I think that would help it to maybe raise up one or two slots, I'm not sure. Like I said, I think this is a first pass. I think project readiness and getting things shovel-ready, I think that's kind of a, one of those aside, that's sort of outside special cases. And we often, on the fly, make that a priority as we move along, when those opportunities come. So I understand exactly, I believe I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Garamella, and how important that is. And I think we do make those decisions when we need to. And this maybe is a little bit outside of the refresh that we're doing right now.
I'll, I'll add this for project readiness and readiness. I know it's important. All of these elements are actually important. It's hard to figure out what's going to be last, what's going to be first, sometimes. So you put the things that are the critical drivers. If you think about in your life, what's a critical driver? Well, safety in my household is number one. You know, when you think about what's propelling you to decide to invest dollars, those things at the top tend to be up there first. Project readiness, it doesn't stand alone, not any one of these stand alone. They are actually all in a critical thinking model. They're all working together to produce a ranking. So it can feed, it can, even though it's 10, and it's not weighted as high. Depending on how it's scored in the critical thinking model, it actually can move a project forward. That, together with others, and how we assess and apply it to the critical thinking model. So, so just in using it and seeing it in action, just remember, project readiness doesn't stand alone. It's all of them together working in that, in that thought process to create a score and a place for you to start. Again, you have the final say, as an elected body, of what the top 10 results to be.
I agree with what you're saying. I'm not discounting anything on the top, but many times, you know, there are opportunities, we didn't have project readiness, you know, project ready that we could apply for. So I don't want to be left out from our town to point of view. At least, there are one or two which are ready that we can apply. So, so that is the critical piece, where all, all those are fine. But if someone is saying, okay, I got the matching fund for, like, a park, you know, or something like, we get the other things, or a road construction, you know? So at least we should have a few in the back pocket that we can, in each area, like, you know, that we can say, okay, we are ready with this, a stormwater, you know, product readiness.
I think we can recognize that as, as you prioritize. You can recognize those nuances that might cause you, as a council, to move a project higher. So just be mindful of that.
Well, good. Does staff feel like they have what they need? I don't see any further comments.
I think we've got enough to bring you a proposed policy back for your consideration.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you both very much.
Thank you, Michael. You did a great job.
Yes, he did. Thank you, Michael.
And the CIP team.
So we have thrown three closed sessions this evening to discuss matters returning to attorney-client privilege, economic development, and a personnel matter. As we have no plans for any business after our closed session at this time, I thank you for watching the meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org, or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. Does the town manager have anything for the good of the order before we go into closed session? Does the town, no? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I had asked for a motion to enter a closed session, those three items.